Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for signing in. I tried emailing Michael to log in, but I also emailed Grace. Cause when I'm here in Westfield, when I try to log in, it doesn't let me.
All right, well, I'm gonna let everybody else in.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't available. I didn't catch that, Kerry.
It's okay. Yeah, I also asked for your phone number from Becky and she gave me a number, but it didn't work and I didn't know what else to do.
Okay, well, I'll just email to you so you have it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll do that right now.
Nathan, if you'd like, you can make me co-host or host.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Um, I can hear you.
Oh, great. Looks like we, uh, it looks like we have a quorum. I'll, I'll call the, the meeting is called to order. But Deacon, what's the first item on the agenda?
The first li- item on the agenda is the election of a new chair.
Don't you have to have a, a, a meeting called to order first before?
I did that.
All right, what were you gonna do next?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate somebody.
Okay.
I'm gonna nominate Nathan Murphy to be Chair of the Planning Board.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Isn't anybody, isn't anybody gonna say anything nice about Nathan?
I've, well, I, Robert Raymond, I wanna say, he's forty years old. And I think he's now old enough.
Yeah, actually, I wanna say happy birthday, Nathan.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry not to get to your party.
Yeah. Well, it's, uh, quite all right.
Well, he's, he's young and strong, and that's all I need to know.
Right.
Go for it.
To Robert's point, he's gonna have a long tenure. He, he may not have been young enough before his birth. I mean, he may not have been old enough before his birthday, but he is now. So, happy birthday and welcome. Could you think of a better present?
No, no, definitely not.
Michael, excellent choice. Excellent choice.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, are we done, are we done, um, discussing Nathan? I guess we just have to ask, are you willing to accept the high honor?
Is it gonna change any of your votes if I say no?
Yeah, not likely.
I'll, uh, yeah, I'll do it.
Yay, yay. Hey, so, uh, does anybody wanna say anything before I call the roll? Thank you. Okay, uh,
Good luck.
Steve Bressler, a big eye. Robert Raymond.
Yay.
Jeff Weston.
Aye with a great appreciation.
Uh, Jeff Lacy.
Aye, and along with my eye goes a thanks to Deacon for his many, many years of being the Chair and getting us through the whole rezoning process and getting us through Wheelock and, uh, and persevering all these years. I've really appreciated you, Deacon, and I thank you for what you've done.
And I will second that, even though it wasn't a motion. Thank Deacon for his guiding hand all through those challenging times. Well, it's all very kind and unwarranted. So, Nathan?
I'm gonna, uh, I, I think, uh, an abstention is appropriate here, probably.
Okay, I, I, I'm a firm I.
Yeah.
Now, is there anybody I missed?
Me.
I'm sorry, Michael.
I'm, I'm an I as well, and I want to second, uh, and third Jeff and Steve, and really appreciate Deacon, you running the show, you know, for as long as you did. You know, joining the planning board is nice to have experienced folks, um, running this thing. So, thank you very much for your efforts.
All right.
And enjoy, and enjoy the just plain old membership. Yes, I, I intend to. Um, so, I, I, I'll now hand the virtual gavel to, uh, Nathan.
Thank you, Deacon.
All right, all right, so here we go, all right. So, we'll, we'll hear, uh, public comment now, if there is any.
Keith Ross. Uh, yeah, I don't know if I'm public comment or if I'm the next item on the agenda, but.
Yeah, you emailed us, you wanna talk about, uh,
Briggs Road.
Briggs Road, okay, yeah, I think you're under, uh,
Education.
Yeah, landowner education and guidance. So, well, uh, is there anyone else, um, here, uh, wanna speak publicly? You know, I see Mark, uh, Whitman has been connecting to the audio for about ten minutes now. I don't know, Mark, if you can hear us, uh, we'll give you a chance to speak later, if that was your intention. Uh, I'll just say, uh, thank you to everyone, uh, for, you know, giving me this great honor to serve as Chair of the Planning Board and I'll, uh, make every attempt to carry it out to, uh, the best of my ability and, uh, and with the good people of Shute's Berry in mind.
Thank you, Nathan.
Um, so, we want to, uh, landowner education and guidance, so that would be, uh, we'll start with Keith Ross there.
Great, uh, thank you very much, um. I'm, uh, I work for a company called Landvest. I live in Warwick, Mass, and, uh, my client, uh, is the Hartshorn family. I've worked for them, managed their forest lands. I'm a forester for about forty, forty-five years. They own about twenty-one, twenty-two hundred acres, uh, along the New Hampshire border and Massachusetts. And, um, uh, they're interested in buying, uh, the back land or a portion of the land owned by the Perry family at, uh, three fifty-one Wendell Road. And so, uh, in the course of figuring out how to do that, you know, they're interested in owning the land long-term for forest management. Uh, they, they have sold conservation restrictions over most of their property, uh, and they will intend to do that at some point with this land, but, um, the way we've drawn the map, which I sent, I don't know if you have it or whether I can put it up on the board, but basically, all the frontage on Wendell Road, seven hundred and eighty-four acres is gonna be retained by the Perry family in a twelve-acre lot. And my client wants to buy the backland, sixty-one point seven five acres, but use frontage on Briggs Road to be able to access that land. And, um, yeah, there it is. So, I think we need to increase the frontage on Briggs Road to three hundred feet rather than two hundred and one feet, uh, which we can do, but, um, my concern is that I don't wanna have this plan come to the planning board and have the planning board decide that Briggs Road is not access for this property and it somehow gets a designation on the plan that this is not a building lot. I wanna avoid that. My clients wanna, you know, maybe they wanna build a house on it someday in the future, but in any case, if they're gonna sell a conservation restriction, the ability to have a house lot on it is gonna greatly impact the value of the property in the future. So, I wondered what the status of Briggs Road is because it's a private road, and yet the Perry family has sold two house lots on, off of it previously in the seventies. And, um, so I was looking for your guidance on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Briggs is opposite Carver, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, opposite Carver East, yeah.
Okay, cause, um, there is one road that is a town road just to the north of that, uh, Stow.
Stow, yeah.
Stow is, um, Briggs is, is not a town road. There, there may be, um, you know, I, I don't know what happened in the seventies, but, um, there, there was a, a, um, a, a townwide evaluation of roads, uh, and, and a blanket discontinuance that took place
Yeah.
either in the seventies or the eighties. And then it, it was one of those things where it said, everything is discontinued except these are our town roads. And Briggs didn't make it. Um, and Carver, and, and Carver didn't make it, and a lot of them didn't make it. So, anyway, you don't have a town road there.
The, um, the two deeds that they sold out, you know, on either side of the road, those deeds both carry a, uh, a description, uh, that, uh, the four described private right-of-way is a discontinued town road. So, um, it, the discontinuance must have happened before this nineteen seventy sale. Right?
I'm, I, I'm, I'm not, well, that might have been discontinued prior to this mass discontinuance.
All right, all right, yeah, okay.
So, there was, there were some that were discontinued before, um, but the, the long and the short of it is, um, you, y- y- you can, I mean, if there are houses on it, which there are, I guess, um, you know, those houses can still be accessed by that sort of discontinued private road. Um, but if there were any new lots for houses to be created, um, then you would have to come to the planning board and you couldn't come in as a public road and you couldn't come in as a subdivision road. You'd have to come in as what's known as, um, a way in existence before the subdivision control law went into effect in town. So, what you're, what you're saying is that it's, um, it's an old road, it's an old way. It's been around for a long time before we adopted the subdivision control law in the nineteen seventies or whenever.
Right.
And, and further that, in the opinion of the planning board, it has adequate grade site distance, there's a number of criteria. Um, so, so we would have to evaluate it and, uh, and judge it to be adequate to provide frontage. So, that would be the way to come in and create lots off of that particular road.
So, if, if we went ahead and, uh, brought a plan to the planning board that identified this, uh, twelve acres as, uh, uh, being cut off from the balance of the property, um, the balance of the property, uh, wouldn't be labeled, uh, not a building lot, it would just be the balance of the property. Sixty-one point seven five acres or so. And then in the future, if my clients, the buyers, decide they wanna, uh, put a house on it or try to increase the value or getting a permit for a house, they'd have to go through this process with the, with the planning board on creating a lot on a way in existence before the subdivision breaks.
Right, but you, you're saying you wanna create a twelve-acre lot? What's that for?
In the front, the, the landowner is retaining their house in twelve acres along Wendell Road. It's got plenty of frontage, it's not a, it's, it's, uh, plenty big enough for a building lot. It's already got a house on it.
Okay, all right. See, so you cut that off and that's perfectly fine because you've got all the frontage in area. And then.
So, we're looking at this, um, this sixty-one point seven five acre parcel that's on, on the right portion of the map.
Yeah. But it'll be adjusted a bit because the frontage on, on, uh, Briggs Road now is two oh one for this lot, one sixty-six for the retained lot. We're gonna have to increase it to like three hundred and one on Briggs Road since that's the minimum frontage for a building lot. Um, minimum.
Two, two fifty.
All right, and we only have the two fifty-one, all right.
Can anybody hear me?
Uh, yes.
Oh, good, right. I'm, I'm, my phone is very tricky here. I'm in, I'm in the house, by the way, I'm on the road on the twelve acres. Um, happy birthday, uh, Nathan, I, I'm the guy who helped out at the AC club there.
Oh.
The other night, that's me.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, Chris, when I, I said I was Chris Perry, I'm the, uh, live in the red house.
Okay, yeah.
So, but just a little backstory to fill people in. So, my family was the Federowskis who came in like forties and fifties, owned all the land, even up to, um, way at Wendell Road, past AC club, selling off to like town members, but, um, down on Briggs Road, uh, the house that is now Michael Broad's, which is the one on the left, first one on the left, that was my cousin Billy's, that's, that was sold to Billy. He inherited, he built a house there in the seventies. And then further down, an earlier house, uh, my cousin Janice, and that was their first, um, that, that was, we gave that to her, you know, many years ago. And then further down was Richard Pekowski, who, um, at the very end, and that was our house too, but they wound up like taking all those houses. But, um, so, just an idea that on Briggs Road, we know it's under forestry and we have had it, uh, forested a couple of times. Um, and we always use Briggs Road. I get it because we own the land and we had the right-of-way to go down Briggs Road and there's still a, a logging road, a logging path off of Briggs Road that goes into the property that the Hartshorns want and Land Trust wants. So, I'm just giving people an idea of like, it's been done before, um, so I don't, you know, I'm not sure what, what stands in the way.
Chris, is that that road, uh, is, is that kind of marked on the map that we're looking at here, um, starting within that two hundred and one, uh,
Yes.
feet of frontage, yeah.
Yeah, the dotted, the dotted white line, that's, that's our logging roads that we took off the, uh, Forest Management Plan.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, I mean, you know, there's, uh, yeah, so you got the idea about the, uh, you know, the, you know, uh, the frontage that, you know, you see in our bylaw. The other thing you might wanna keep in mind is the, um, one thousand-foot, uh, driveway, uh, just the way that that, uh, lot is constructed, you know, you're gonna have to go back pretty far and then, you know, possibly go to the, to the east a little bit, once you get towards the, uh, you know, northern part of the lot there in order to, uh, if you wanted to build like that. Um, there may be other options as well, some potentially like a, uh, that's the one we just did.
Yeah.
Jeff Whitman here, the Whitman, yeah, um, open space design.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, but, uh, just, just, that's just a consideration for the, for your, your client.
Yeah, yeah.
Man, you know, it's hard to say, uh, you know, it's not marked out how far back, you know, you could see eighty-one, one sixty-six, two oh one. You know, so just getting back there is eight hundred feet, easy, you know, and then, you know, just something for considering if that's gonna be where they build or whatnot. And, and it sounds like it may be just, you know, to increase the value of a conservation restriction anyhow.
That's right. It's sort of, it's a, it's unlikely they'll build on it, but, uh, but it does increase the value, but it's also increases the urgency for, let's say, the Quavon or some nonprofit land trust to purchase the property to prevent development on it. If it's not developable, they'll spend their money elsewhere. And, and we're looking for long-term conservation protection of the land to get the best possible long-term forest management on it.
Right.
Great.
Do you have any access to the property? I don't know, it doesn't look like it, but, you know, Briggs Road, uh, kinda goes, what, to the east and then, uh, kinda comes down towards the south there in that corner.
Yeah.
Uh, is kinda close to it. I don't know if that would be a potential entry point. You know, so even if you didn't have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage at that point, if you had, did have access to it, um, you know, that could solve any kind of potentially solve, you know, other questions on, uh, the buildability of the lot, I don't know.
Yeah. As they get to know it over time, they'll figure out, you know, how they wanna do it. And I, I, I think you're right. Um, you know, we will, you know, get some kind of easement from the Perrys to be able to use that existing woods road, but more than likely, they will develop, uh, the road access to come further down Briggs Road so they don't have to go up and around there uh, to be able to access the larger property for forest management. All right, I think this is what I need to know. I, I appreciate your time.
Very well.
Yeah, if, if you have a more, a, a little more concrete idea of what you're, what you're proposing, you know, why don't you come back to us one more time?
Yeah, oh, definitely, we will. I appreciate your time, this, this has been helpful. I don't know, Chris, if you had anything more to add or?
No, I just, um, I didn't understand, you know, I, I was, I was, I was young and I was at college, like, when we logged the road, so I missed a lot of stuff. But I just know that like, you know, the logging trucks went down Briggs Road and took that left through, uh, the stone wall, it's part of that dotted line you see. Obviously, a property wrapped around Billy's old house, which is now the Broad's house, goes back down, I mean, um, I mean, what I would add to is like, I think some people might be looking for a, a road you could walk on through the woods. It's pretty messy and thick. Uh, I know there are paths and stuff, but like, um, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think it's obviously, I'm getting older and uh, my family probably could use some money and we don't really go down to that back property. And I, I just think like, uh, you know, those logging trucks had always gone that, that way and was never, never problem, but.
Well, yeah, no.
I can't, I, I can't see, I can't see the next hundred years, so I'm putting in seventeen houses back there, you know, so, you know.
I, I think it's just a matter of, you know, with, uh, new development on, uh, private road like that, there's just a verification that comes before this board to say, hey, you know, it looks like it would meet the minimum standards for a, a way that, uh, house could be built, a dwelling could be built on, that's all.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Good thing.
Good luck as your next twenty years as Chair of the Board.
We'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, your beard's gonna look like Deacon by then.
Yeah.
And, but you'll only do sixty, you'll only do sixty.
Right.
Yeah, you, you can get at least thirty years out of it.
Yeah. Man, I'm, I'm seventy-five.
Don't we vote on this every year? I, I, I think it's a little premature to, you know, start saying Chairman, or anything like that.
Just thinking of the power.
You know, there might be someone else that really wants it next year. Uh, right, so, uh, anyone else, um, for land, uh, landowner education and guidance, is there anyone else here for that? Mark, are you here for that? Then we have you, you're on the agenda later on. Uh, we have seven twenty-five, uh, next is eight PM, the Marian hour, so that's, uh, we've got, um, thirty-five minutes to go, so, uh, Mark, if you are, uh, connected to audio now and wanna, wanna go, uh, we should, we should talk.
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Welcome. Uh, so, uh, the, the agenda item is, uh, the driveway, um, i- is it true that the, uh, did you go before the zoning board?
That's correct.
And, and what happened there?
Uh, the zoning board was amenable, but they'd like to see it ten feet wide instead of eight to nine feet wide, which is, I think, Jeff, how we, how it was written up with the planning board. So, um, it will require us to push some of those ancient, they're not real walls, they're sort of, you know, um, piles of stone at this point, but it'll require us to push the stone a little bit, uh, to one side, keeping them there, but pushing it back a little bit to get that ten-foot width. Their concern was, um, getting an ambulance or a fire truck down there. Um, I, I know that no vehicles allowed on the road that's wider than eight feet for the wheelbase, but their concern was, well, they've got mirrors, things of that fashion as well, and if you're pushing the snow, um, there's concern that how far can you push the snow and still keep that eight or nine-foot width? So, the agreement, the, they came to a, a decision that they thought ten feet would do it. Um, that would suffice, it would allow us to keep the, the, um, small path, use that existing small path instead of, or woods road instead of putting in the mega driveway. Um, so it seems like a reasonable comp- compromise. It just means coming back to you guys, have you approve that if you're okay with ten feet instead of eight to nine, same, same drive path, just pushing it off to one side a little bit? And then I'll go back to the ZBA and have them approve, uh, hopefully approve the ten-foot wide.
All right.
It's been a haul.
Yeah, so it's true, we'd have to have a public hearing on that to, uh, make, make that change, right?
Oh, do you?
I think so. I, I'm gonna, uh, lean on Jeff and, um, Michael while, uh,
I'm gonna lean on Jeff. I mean, I think it's an amendment, it's probably an amendment to the special permit that we approved, so I, well, actually, you know, so an amendment does have to go through a public hearing.
Right.
Does, or doesn't?
It does, yes.
It does.
Yeah, but,
You beat.
Yeah, but, Mark, your, you know, dear, maybe relief, it's only one item and we've been through it before, so it shouldn't be the whole rigmarole, right?
Um, well, all right, um, as, as Congress has it sounds, um, the Mark has to come back to us for amendment to a special permit, which our zoning bylaw says shall be through the same process as was raised in the bond. So, it, you know, I, I don't know how much flexibility we have on, um, on adjusting the fee, but the problem is, it all has to be advertised. It has to be a special permit. That you, you need, you need two, two newspaper ads, you need to, to notice the butters, the whole thing has to be done again. Um, to go from eight to nine feet to ten feet, um, it has to be done again, unfortunately. Um, you know, that, that might be something that we think about in the future. Do we want for a de minimis amendment, a small amendment, special permits? Do we want another, another process? But just looking through state law and they're, they're, they're kinda silent on amendment special permits, or at least I, I'm not familiar with it. Um, we could have another process in the future that we might wanna think about adopting that allows an applicant to come back while their special permit is still in effect and make small changes and do it without as much expense or time. But, right now, we're looking through going back for another special permit um, to change that eight to nine feet to ten feet. And that's, that's really the only change.
What, what do you need from me to do that?
Just a, a special permit application form that filled out saying this is an amendment to a special permit granted, um, so-and-so, um, and the amendment changes the, um, the proposed width during that two hundred-foot section from eight to nine feet to ten feet. Um, that, naturally, the only thing. Um, the, uh, zoning board meets this Thursday. I've already drafted a decision. Um, Mark, you should be getting a copy of that draft from Kerry. Um, the other members have it. Um, and really, that's all it says, is that the, the eight to nine is changed to ten for that two hundred-feet foot section. There, there are three conditions that I did put in there, the draft conditions, and I, um, I don't think there's any open meeting law problem with me just, um, floating them out in front of the planning board, in case you have observations about them. Um, one condition was that the rock walls, rock wall is gonna have to be moved a bit, but that it's only done on one side. And Mark already said that's the way to do it. Um, so the rock walls are not gonna be both moved, it's only gonna be one move a bit where necessary, so it minimizes the rock wall disruption. The other one is, is to ensure the drainage down the driveway remains on the applicant's land. There is an opening to the west that goes onto the neighbor's land. We wanna make sure that no drainage because of a, uh, an elevated and, and compacted and used driveway flows over there into the western neighbor, so they're gonna have to deal with that. And then also, just to address the whole issue of large vehicles getting in there, no, no matter what kind of vehicle it is, whether it's a propane truck or a, or, um, uh, ambulance or, or, you know, our large fire engine, that, um, a, a, a twelve-foot wide by fifteen-foot high corridor be maintained vegetation-free, and that's just done through trimming. And, um,
The only concern I have with that, Jeff, is if, um, there are trees in that, you know, between the ten to fifteen, or ten to twelve-feet width. The only concern I have with that, Jeff, is if, um, there are trees in that, you know, between the ten to fifteen or ten to twelve feet width. So you know what I mean? So we'd have to, maybe it's trimming of the trees within that twelve feet or something, so that we're not taking those trees down. That was the concern you had is making sure the tree stayed in place.
Um, maybe I'll go out there and look at it again to see if that's really what it's gonna involve. Um, because I'm thinking of in the winter, you know, if you've got stuff that you can get through in the summer and then in the winter, everything gets coated with snow and ice and down it comes and then
Right.
You get through there.
So we're not worried about the trunk of a tree, we're worried about the limbs and rest on the tree. So if it's worried where the trunk of the tree can stay, but the limbs have to be removed for the twelve feet and fifteen high.
Right.
That makes sense?
Yep, yep. So I'll, before the Thursday meeting, I'll go down there and take another look at it quick just to make, make sure I know what it, but that's gonna entail.
And can you tell me if the special permit, um, application is online or do I need to? Can somebody send one to me so I can take it from there?
I believe Kerry has them and I believe they're also online. Michael, I think they're online.
I'm pretty sure they're online. I'm gonna check right now. And Jeff, since you gave me the floor, I had a question for you. So I didn't get all the language you just said about the trees, but if, if the language is something about ma- maintaining, um, that distance, it's, you know, that's, that provides the assurance that the trees aren't coming down and it's just really trimming and, um, so you might just think about those words.
Yeah, makes sense.
It, it, it's probably something that may, may or may not hap- happen, but it could give the town some kind of recourse in the future if the, if the vegetation really gets bad in there.
Right.
Yeah.
So Mark, I'm looking, there is a special permit checklist online. There is a special permit fee schedule and the special permit application as a PDF.
And you, can you hit me with an email or send me an email with that?
I'll, I'll just send you the link to the, uh, the page and then you could just download and look at them.
Thanks, man. That'd be great.
Sure.
You wanna fill it out too? I'm kidding. We can talk.
Sign it too.
Yeah, it's, yeah. All right, folks, that sounds good. Well, it sounds like it is what it is. We'll get through it.
I, you know, I, I plow snow and shoots berry and I have about thirty driveways I do. And, um, I hope I get to do this one because it's gonna be a pretty good driveway when it's.
It will in comparison to many in town, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I appreciate it. Is there any other questions for me or we're all set? Great.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Mark, you know all about the meeting on Thursday, right?
Um, say it again, this Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday, Z B A at five o'clock.
Oh, five o'clock. Thank you. Z B A Thursday, five o'clock.
We'll, we'll wrap you up.
Yeah, and then, um, it'll be advertised. Uh, it's gonna take about how long? What's the advertising time? Two weeks, something like that?
It, it has, it, it has to get to the papers and, and, and appear, um, the, the first appearance can be no closer than two weeks. And then the next one a week later.
To planning board. Okay. All right. I'll see if I can get that up here tomorrow and, um, I'll send it to Kerry.
Yep.
That sounds great. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Here.
Thank you. So sounds like Mark is gonna throw some paperwork, give it to Kerry.
Sorry, Nathan, just a, a, a comment. I, I thought the best thing about that project that got through the Z B A is that the Z B A agreed to use the existing alignment. That's, that, that's the big thing. So that's what's gonna make that driveway um, far less intrusive than it could have been if he blasted it down the center. So.
Right.
So it was a success, I guess, yeah.
So just to kind of, you know, have a few logistical points on this, right? I assume, it sounds like, uh, Mark is trying to get this through, uh, quicker, as, as quick as possible. Um, so once, uh, you know, say we receive some paperwork in next, uh, week or so, you know, this kind of inter-month, you know, we work, uh, Kerry and I work together to get the, the notices out. And then, uh, we can, you know, schedule the hearing probably for like around our July meeting, right? That's what I meant, August, yeah. So, uh, otherwise we'd be looking at kind of like a, you know, yeah, further delay. But I guess it just, you know, we just kind of, uh, figure it out once we get the, uh, paperwork in.
Yeah, Nathan, if you'd like, I'll be in the office Tuesday and Thursday. So if you'd like to meet up at some point and we can go over stuff together, that would work as well.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. Okay. All right.
And Nathan, one quick thing, I'm just picking up on Jeff's recommendation. When we get around, you know, like September, October, talk about any bylaw amendments. We, I think, thinking about this de minimis, um, dance for special permits might be something we want to discuss at that point. So I'll, I'll make a note, but just to mention it, because it's, it seems reason, if, if someone's just gone through, I mean, it's ju- just ceased being active. So it's not like he's, you know, Mark's coming back three years later with a whole new idea. So it's something to consider.
I, I just have to, I have to do a little research and make sure it's not contradicted by state law. If state law says you have to go back through the whole thing, then we can't change it. But if it's silent, then we can devise our own modification process.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we've got some, uh, New Year's thoughts, agenda items, so we should talk about it a little bit when we get to that point. Okay, um, so I see that, uh, Mr., uh, Chuck, uh, Damari is on now. Should we, uh, uh, this is not, you know, we have eight P M, uh, on the agenda, but it's, uh, not the kind of thing that's a public hearing, so we could probably, uh, address it earlier if, uh, and Chuck, you are muted.
Okay, I'm all, you, you hear me now?
I do.
Okay, great. Oops. Oh, I see. Michael, uh, DeCarras, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
All right. Appreciate it. Um, do you want me to briefly present this? So, yeah. Everybody sees it? Are we ready to go?
So look, is it, is it true that there's, uh, is this kind of adding some smaller sections of land to, uh, existing, uh, lots there?
Yeah, and basically, uh, you, when this, when the special permit uh, was created back in, I don't know, two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, there were two lots that were attached to my essentially slightly more than a two acre lot. Um, and Lot A, uh, was merged uh, with my building lot, which is called Lot One. And, uh, that's now, uh, taxed as one three point one acre lot. And, uh, go ahead.
I just wanted to interrupt real quickly, which I, I'll zoom in, but are we talking about the left side or the right side?
The right side where my house is. My house is, uh, go to my house. Yeah, it's, you see, yeah, there it is. You, you just, you're just almost on it. It's right in the middle of the page right now. That's the, yeah, right, there it is. That's my house.
Yeah, yep, okay.
And then you can see slightly to the right, you see Lot A, which is a one acre lot. It's merged with my house lot now. So now that house lot is three point one acres. Okay, so what I aim to do, you, you recall, uh, we, we were last here in early February. And what I aim to do now is again, carry out the, uh, mandates of the special permit. Um, there's Lot B and, and what I'm simply doing here is dividing it in two. And, and, uh, the, the idea, Lot B two, do you see that, Michael?
Yeah.
B two, yeah. So the idea is, uh, um, the house is on the market. Um, we've had a couple of offers, but the last, there, there was a concern with the very last one that, um, many people are gonna get onto Lot B with lounge chairs and stare at the house though. So they, they literally said that. So, uh, my, my relatives and we thought that, you know, this is the time to move forward with, again, the mandate and the special permit that Lot B is to be conveyed, just like Lot A was, and, and we're already done with Lot A, but Lot B was to be conveyed in whole or in part uh, to Lot One or to Lot Two. So what we're gonna do now is, you know, we're going to, uh, uh, market, um, Lot B two as part of the building lot. So the lot will go from three point one acres, which it is right now, a little bit more than that, to a little bit more than three point six acres. So this Lot B two is exactly one half of an acre. So when we sell Lot One, uh, we will sell it at three point six, uh, slightly more than three point six acres. That'll go as one, uh, building lot, which is, um, where my house is right now. And hopefully tha- that impediment will be removed from, uh, uh, issues that existed. So that, that's all we're trying to do. I would ask for approval. It's again, it's, it's contemplated and mandated by the special permit. Um, you know, and you can see Lot B two and Lot B one, you can see them in, in previous uh, plans, talk, didn't talk about B one and B two, it was just Lot B and Lot A. So, or are there any questions about this? I mean, it's pretty simple. It's gonna sell it all together, that three point six acres with my house.
Right, right, okay. Um,
I have just one question.
We, we can, we can enter. You have a question, Michael?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not earth shattering. I was sort of curious. So B one is currently defined as this ninety-six point five by three hundred nine. That's staying the same and it's separate from everything else at this point, right?
Correct. And, and, but ultimately, because the special permit says this, ultimately, B one will be either conveyed to Lot One or to Lot Two, which is now Lot Two. When we came here in February, early February, Lot Two was changed from proposed Lot Two to Lot Two. Um, so that, that's what it is. I, I will be back again. Don't have the language now. Uh, I did discuss this briefly, uh, with, 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 with Jeff Lacy as a liaison. I, I think I mentioned it's a Deacon too, but, uh, I, I think the planning board, you all from way back, we've done two thousand and fifteen and we were going through the permitting process in this, uh, were happy with me not building on Lot Two and we, and that may still in fact happen. We may not. No one may ever build on Lot Two. Um, so the, the slight change we were gonna make later, but you don't have to get into it now is, 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 is to, right now, it's, once Lot Two is sold, uh, then Lot One, Lot Two and Lot Three, which is presently owned by Kathleen Lugash, will have to share in the road maintenance costs, um, uh, for that Summer Mountain Road, some, in fact, this part of it's called Summer Mountain Way. Okay, so it's gonna be eventually conveyed. Lot B One will be eventually conveyed. Lot B Two will be more immediately conveyed when the house sells. Does that answer your question, Michael?
Yeah, totally, totally.
Thank you.
Yeah. So procedurally, if we wanna give Chuck the thumbs up, is it, is it just a vote or Jeff, what's the protocol?
Well, we need to, um, this has been submitted Chuck as, as a, a, a A and R with a Form A and a P.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we have to, um, approve that and sign it. So Chuck can go and record it.
Exactly. And I, I'm, I'm in Vermont now and I'm, we're kind of landlord, there's floods up here. But tomorrow, I'm, I aim to be down there, so I'm hoping um, I can meet, who, who, who has the authority to sign? I, I understand, Deacon signed the last one.
At present, at present, I have the ability to sign and, and, and that does not go, that does not go to another person until another, until another letter is written to the registry of deeds. So, so.
Oh, right, cuz it's, oh, it's, uh, it was your name, not the chair of the planning board?
Right, right, exactly.
So you could, uh, so Deacon, you could sign the A and R and, and all of the copies and I can?
Yes, and I can do that tomorrow.
Can you, can you, can you, eh, drop them off at the town hall, uh?
Well, they are at the town.
Oh, or maybe, uh, I don't know if our land use clerk, Kerry, you're gonna be there on Thursday?
Yes, I'll be there on Thursday.
So, 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 so maybe, so the idea is, or, or if you sign tomorrow, Deacon, eh, eh, if, uh, our town clerk of grace knows where they are, I can just grab them at that point in time. You know, sometime on, on Wednesday or Thursday, I'll probably gonna go up to the registry of deeds, but, and, and record it.
Yeah, so, so we probably need to, a, a motion and a second and a vote um, to not only approve these plans, but to, uh, to go ahead and allow, um, just to formalize it, allow Deacon to, to sign for the planning board again.
All right, I do have one question. I mean, I think we should talk about the, the money. I mean, there is not a, I mean, I guess we're, are we creating a, we are, there's a new building lot, I guess, so.
No, no, Deacon, this is gonna be merged to, to part, as part of Lot One.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the, the, there is a, there is a, a building lot that is, there is a new building lot in, with a different definition than it was before, so.
Yes, yes. Once, once you approve this, uh, this, the building lot that's presently uh, three point one, slightly more than three point one acres will become slightly more than three point six acres. I did pay.
But what I'm, but the question I'm asking is, we're not, we're not actually creating an additional building lot. We're creating a, a building lot with a different definition, so.
Exactly.
But, but I just wanna be, we should be clear about what the charge should be for that.
Well, I paid seventy dollars, so I don't know if that was appropriate or not, but.
Well, it's seventy dollars and then an additional seventy dollars for each additional building lot. Is that true or was that, that was like?
Well, it's, it, it's supposed to be seventy dollars per, per lot. Per lot. And, uh, you know, usually those are regarded as new lots. So, you know, you have a bunch of frontage and you create A, B, C, D, that's seventy times forty. Um, these have always been confusing, you know? Because you do end up with new lots. I mean, they're different shapes. They're bigger, they're different shapes. They're bigger or they're smaller, they're different shapes. So they are new lots in that sense, but they're not lots in that they allow any more houses or any more development.
Exactly. Lots. It's not a new lot, it's still Lot One and Lot Two. It's just, it's, it's a different definition of Lot One and Lot Two.
So, so, so the question is, you know, fees that we charge are supposed to be to cover our cost in the things we do. So seventy dollars is a, is a modest fee for, for these things. Um, do we incur seventy dollars worth of, of cost? You know, there's no advertising, there's no hearing, there's no notice. I mean, there's some that carries time for us. I don't know, um.
Oh, it's, it's, if it's reasonable, and I mean, I don't think we should waive it if that's, if it can be, I mean, if it's an issue of interpreting one way or another, I think that's, we can discuss it. But I wouldn't waive either, either scenario, like whatever we think is the fair way to interpret it, we should charge, charge that.
I, I paid it. I didn't think that I had to pay it, but I did pay it because I didn't wanna, if I didn't pay it, it wouldn't be perfected and you couldn't vote perhaps, if you decided that I should pay it. But I did pay it seventy bucks, dollars. And I gave the check to Kerry. I, I'm, I'm fine with it, even if it's just a. And I gave the check to Carrie, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, even if it's just a donation.
I, I, I would say in this case. We, we, we take, we, we take, uh. Chuck's money and, um. Perhaps we add this as a discussion item to the future. Um, you know, of, of exactly how we do this, cuz I know we've talked about it many, many times over the years. So I would say if we've got seventy bucks, we'll hang on to it, uh, you know. Maybe that goes to help pay Carrie. Um, there is no advertising, no other cost. That I know of. Um. So.
Yeah, I only raised it cuz it's been confusing over the years.
Yep, but it, it, it's a separate topic, and I think, I think maybe Nathan can make a note of it, how do we? How do we charge fees when there's actually no new building lots being created, but building lots are being rejiggered?
Okay. Um, so for the time being, I'd like to hear a motion.
I will move that we approve, um, Chuck Damari's plan as he's presented it. And authorize. Deacon Bonner, um, to sign for the planning board, whatever we decide.
Second.
Any discussion?
I only have one factoid, which is when we. Deacon and I, when we under the roll, the check was, uh. Rubber banded around it, so Carrie, their check is in a box at the top of this, of the pile. So it's, it's now separated from the roll.
Okay, I knew there was a confusion about the payment, so I didn't wanna process it until something was finalized. And then I wasn't there on Thursday, so.
Yeah, we were there this, this afternoon, so it's, it's, it's there, we both saw it.
Okay, if, uh, there's no further discussion, I will call the roll. Raymond?
Hi.
Bressler?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Lacy?
Hi.
Bonner?
Hi.
Dickara?
Oh, you did it, Nathan, thank you, hi.
And I'm an I. So there you have it, it passes unanimously. So, Deacon, uh, will you try to get it to the town hall tomorrow? Perhaps?
Yeah, 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 I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I, I won't be there, I probably won't get there until after three, cuz I have to drive there and half Route eighty-nine is blocked right now and underwater, so.
Wow.
They have to figure, yeah, there's about ten towns are flooded in, around. Especially in the Montpelier Barry area, but easily ten towns, it's very seriously.
I saw, I saw a headline that it was like worse flooding than Irene.
Exactly, in fact, we're gonna get, we're gonna get another seven inches tonight, just to, you know. Part of the Lake Champlain area, and more toward Montpelier, but. I'm up on a, a thousand foot ridge overlooking Lake Champlain, so I'm pretty safe, but. The lowlands are not. You know. But I'll be back tomorrow for, for about four or five days, dealing with all of this and a few other things. Okay, so I thank you all for your time and your patience, uh, it's been a long road with this special permit that was granted in. Two thousand fifteen or sixteen. You know, that's the other thing you can consider, uh, and, and when you have the open space design approvals, you can talk about what the fees might be. When, when you have these land that might be added later on, you know, you can maybe do it as part of the special permit. Anyway. It's fine with me, no problem. I like donating to the town, my time and my money. Uh, so, thank you so much.
Good night, Chuck.
Thank you, you're probably. One more time.
Stay safe. And stay dry.
Take care, thank you, thank you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the meeting right now. I gotta remember how to do that. Yeah.
Lower.
Here it is.
Lower right.
Bye, everyone.
Bye bye.
Take care. All right. Now, uh, we've already done the, uh, women driveway, next is, uh. Pharaoh complaint on Bonner logging. So, uh. Deacon, I think, uh.
I guess, I, I. I guess Mary Lou hasn't come, but. I, I wanted to, uh. I wanted to say that, uh. Uh, the logging that she's referencing is taking place more than a mile from AMP, there is no clear cut involved. Um. And the land that I own that is close to AMP has a conservation restriction from fishing wildlife on it, so. I just, uh. I, I, I wanted to make clear that, uh. That I wasn't violating wetlands laws or. Or clear cutting. Or helping AMP.
Was that the complaint?
Yes. Yes.
That you were helping yeah, AMP.
That you were sort of confused, but that, there, there's, there was email addressed to the planning board complaining about. Um. The logging job that's going on on my land. On land that's more than a mile from AMP.
Yeah. Well, the complaint seems to be two part, one that you were logging and logging is, is illegal. And number two, that. Your logging somehow was connected to or benefited the, uh, AMP project on the other side of the road somewhere. So.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So. I, I, I move, we accept those. Those comments and put them in the record and move on.
You wanna, you wanna really move, or you're just saying that?
Hmm?
You're not really moving, or do you want me to second it?
You think, uh, you, you, you wanna? Well, I think.
I don't know, it, 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 it's an agenda item, how are we gonna dispose of it?
Well, I, well, it's definitely gonna go in the minutes, you know, the Deacon said this, so I think if, if none of us are objecting, it's probably sufficient documentation, I think. Uh, we could, I mean, I'm happy to, I, I, it was really genuinely a question. Like if the, if the planning board wants to ex- accept and acknowledge Deacon's statement, that's, makes it extra, you know, certified, I guess.
Yeah, well, you know, if, if, if the author of the letter ever asked what, what we did. We discussed it, there was a motion to accept her letter and put it in, in the record and move on. After discussion.
Accept her letter?
Yeah, you know, it, it's part of our planning board records, anything we get is supposed to go somewhere.
Yeah, well, right, I mean, it's, it's a, uh, it's an available public record, um. So what you, so what you're saying is you would move that the, uh, email from Mary Lou Pharaoh is going to be. Kind of, uh, included with the related documents for this set of minutes for this meeting and that, uh. Uh, and that during the meeting, uh, Deacon indicated that the, uh, part of his land is currently being logged, is not adjacent to, uh. Anything that is, uh, being looked at by AMP and, uh, that we accept that?
So moved, yeah. Okay.
And Carrie's got a hand up.
Yes, quick question, oh, okay, um. If the logging was also done as a, like agriculture process, I know that is also exempt from any wetlands bylaws. Or the Wetland Protection Act. And that's what she was referencing in her email, so.
That's right, that's right, there was a lot of confusion in the email.
Yeah, she, she listed a good amount of. Um. Reasonings for her concern, and I know that was one of them, and I know that. That activity specifically logging for agriculture is exempted.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, you know, I think it's, uh, fine to, you know, kind of, uh, create a record that we, uh, looked at this, but, you know, the complaint is not really, uh. One for the, the planning board, it would be, you know, the. The claim is that there's a wetlands violation, and one of the emails does have the Conservation Commission copied, so if, uh. You know, if they think there's any issue with it, I would imagine that, uh, Deacon would be hearing from them, so, uh. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's. It doesn't seem to carry much weight, but, uh. Other than that, unless, uh, unless anyone else has anything they wanna add, we can vote.
I, I just wanted to make sure that this, that this complaint didn't, did not. Did not go ignored.
Right, okay, yeah, we're addressing it, we're, uh. That's, that's, that's good. All right, um. I'll call the roll. Bressler?
Hi.
Raymond?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Lacy?
Hi.
Dickara?
Hi.
Bonner?
I'll abstain.
And, uh, I'm an I. Carrie, you got all that?
Yes, I did.
All right. All right, what the heck is this next agenda item? Says Lacy departure.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess I gotta talk on this one, um. Uh, some of you know this, um. But, uh, I, I will be moving to Conway, Mass, um, as early as this fall and as late as next spring. So. Um. Off we go, my partner has a. Has a, a beautiful little horse farm over there, and we've decided that's where we're going to make our home, so. Um, that's where I'm gonna go. And, uh. At that, I've already let the ZBA know, and. I've. Also let the select board know, not that I'm moving, but I'm stepping off the planning board, but. Uh, you know, at some point, when I actually move away from town, I'll have to step off the planning board. Um, I, I will stay on it until I have to get off. Um. If, if I wasn't, uh, moving, it would probably be until death do us part, but, um.
Something else is till death do us part.
Yeah, right. So. Anyway, that's what's coming up. And, um.
I'll jump in. And, uh, I guess first I'll just say, you know, well, thank you when you have to get off, when, if, whenever you get off, so. Do thank you, Jeff, for all your, you know, leadership and wisdom, cuz it's appreciated. Uh, I told Deacon I'm gonna try to sabotage the sale of your house, so it takes longer, uh, so that's. That's number two, um, the third thing, I just, I, you know, I. I found out from someone who's at the ZBA, so I've been thinking about this for a few days, and, um. I guess procedurally for, you know. There's two parts of it, one is that. Whenever Jeff leaves, assuming it's this fiscal year. The process is that the select board and the planning board get together and we co-appoint someone till June thirtieth of this year, and then. You know, someone's up for election for the remainder of Jeff's term. One thing I thought of, just because Jeff is such a resource, is. You know, we, we just advertised for an associate member. But part of me is thinking that we can leave that slot open, and, you know. When Jeff leaves, we could appoint him associate member, there's nothing that I could see that requires an associate member who's appointed to be a resident. Um, so. Especially Nathan, if you're gonna have to hop off for a solar, um, special permit, having someone in the, in the ranks as an associate member. Who knows this stuff might be helpful, so I'm thinking ahead, but I just wanna share it.
No, that's smart, we obviously gotta double check that, I think, maybe with Donna, but, uh. You know, it's. Yeah, we wanna make sure, uh, that that's, uh, that would be valid.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't do it if you're elected, but as an appointed, I think it's, like, I know in the Concom. And other, other appointed committees, they've had not, they've had non-resident members, so we.
We also have to make sure Jeff is willing, he, uh.
He doesn't have a say in this.
I, I actually, I agree with Michael. Um, in fact. I think Jeff gets to be. An unpaid consultant for the remainder of his time, even if he's not in Chutesbury, so we can call him with questions. For the next, wait, Jeff, did you get just re- get reelected recently?
Yeah, I can't remember, not this time, I, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think you were up last year.
So there's another two years of, cuz, you know, responsible consulting. Because he's leaving us in a lurch like this.
To atone, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
I, I may do something similar on the zoning board as well, cuz the zoning board really. Um, you know, it's got new members that have, have no experience, um. So I, I may try to do something like that with them as well, but, um. Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to do that for a while, I'm, you know, I'm quite interested in what the. The, the town is doing with respect to the complaint and the lawsuit and our defense of our bylaws and. Um. Uh. That'll probably keep me, keep me around for a while.
Good, good. Yeah, that, that, uh, so you'll, you'll be, uh, continuing, uh. Consulting work and, uh, in planning, in the planning field.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and, and our, uh, bylaws kind of a, uh, centerpiece on your resume, so. You've got, uh, you've got a vested interest.
That's right, I've, I've done our bylaw for other towns. So.
Right, yeah.
And Nathan, I want to think just to add, I don't know if this is a homework assignment for you or for just all of us for discussion next time, but. I mean, in my thinking about this stuff, I thought, well, the logical person. That me, but we might want to appoint. For the remainder might be Ashley, if she was willing, um, so she's not here tonight, so we can't ask her, I don't know if you wanted to. Check, check out in between meetings, or we just raise it and, you know, just not leaving. Until the fall, so we got some time, but, you know, that's also something, part two to consider.
And one thing I would say too, is that I don't think there's any reason to hold off on getting the second associate member, precisely for the reason you just mentioned.
Ah, hmm, that's smart, yeah. Hadn't, hadn't got that far, Deacon, good. Well, ma- maybe if we do that, then it'll pressure Ashley to sort of step up to be the appointed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, at, at Nathan's party the other night, I already hit Ashley up on that, on that score, and, uh. I, I detected some, uh, receptivity, so.
Cool.
Some, some receptivity.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Could I chime in for a second here?
Yeah.
Thank you, so, um, Jeff Lacy, it's, um, been incredible to, uh. Just work with you and, um, your wealth of knowledge, understanding, patience. Um, has been just incredible, so thank you so much for, um. Helping the town, my only regret is that the people in the town don't realize the. The, um, tremendous help that you've given to all of us in your, um. Knowledge and willing to, uh, share your expertise. So, um, so thank you so much for, um, I've just been here for a little while, but I've been very, very impressed and, um, appreciative of all your. Um, all your effort. On, on a second, you know, note, I'm just throwing this out, ju- um, just because Jeff, you were brilliant and also. Asking that builder, I was in the zoning board, uh, meeting last time. Asking that builder to be an associate member for the zoning board. And I know that he's gonna retire, this is my memory anyway, that he plans on retiring in September. And I'm wondering if you might. Get a, uh, it's not a trifecta, but, uh, whatever it's called, when you get to, to, uh, a, a, a bi-factor, whatever. Of asking him if he wants to be an associate member of the planning board. Um, in addition to an associate member of the zoning board, he would be, um, a, in my judgment, he'd be a great source for the. Planning board as well, so I'm just throwing that out as a possibility.
Well, John Thompson was, was the chair of the planning board when I joined it twenty-seven years ago. And, um. Yeah, he's been on planning board, he's been on the zoning board. Um, he's a great resource, um. I, my, my first priority with John is to try to convince him to be. A full-time member of the ZBA and let me go to associate.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
When I leave, that's my. That, that, that's mostly what I want him to do.
Okay, that's good.
He's got lots of ZBA experience, he's a building inspector, he knows zoning, and, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Understood, but thank you, thank you, Jeff, it's been, uh, incredible, I appreciate all your effort.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, and not.
Confident that, uh, you know, being an associate member and performing those, uh, functions is gonna be, uh. Free and clear of any, uh, requirements of town residency?
I'm, I'm like ninety-five percent.
Jeff?
Um, I, I think Michael would know because he's. Spent time appointing people as a select board member and chair. Um, and, and there was indeed a, a appointed conservation commissioner who was not a member of the, uh, not a resident of the town.
Nice.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, now that's, you know, I'm just.
We can easily find that out.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and I think just my two cents on what Jeff Weston was saying, not on the personality, but more on. Like, as we were teasing Nathan, youth has its benefits for this kind of turnover, so. You know, getting someone at the end of their career, even if they might know a lot. Um, I think we gotta make sure that, you know, we're getting someone who's gonna put the time in for a little bit, so we don't all age out at the same time. Um. So.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, uh, it's gonna, it's a, gonna be a huge void on the. Yeah, no, uh, it's gonna, it's a, gonna be a huge void on the board, uh, without Egypt, so, uh. I don't know, hopefully we can get a lot done in the next few months.
I, I just wanna say, uh. The pile of gratitude that's been expressed is so high, I don't think. Uh, uh, anymore can be loaded on, so I, I just want to. Uh, uh, repeat everything that's already been said, uh. Uh, and, uh. So grateful for your presence here as well as presence up the road.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. Gonna miss you guys on Baker Road.
Hey Steve, now's your chance to cut him down with some comments, being that you've known him so long.
Yeah.
I, I was using restraint. When, when Robert said pile on the gratitude, I was thinking of piling on something else, but I'm gonna hold my tongue. Well, I appreciate the opportunity, Michael. Provided. Let it, let it go on the record that Steve has shown some restraint.
Noted. I'll hear it in other venues.
It'd be nice to write some kind of bylaw to prevent him from selling his house. I don't know if that's possible for the.
Well. Jeff, that, that may not po- be possible, but I think. I would encourage all planning board members, if they have any connections to any realtors. Talk about all the issues that there are with that property. Okay, and, you know, wouldn't touch it with a ten-foot pole.
First, pass it on two sides, it's gotta be noisy.
Yeah.
Traffic, my god.
Oh, yeah. That little, you know, and not, not mentioning the kinds of wetlands violations that the current owners. Responsible for.
And let us not forget the tectonic fault it sits upon.
Gotta watch out for plate tectonics.
Shake it up, baby.
Things are terrible.
Location, location, location.
Now, uh. Anything else on, uh, Jeff's departure before we, uh, hit the next one? Associate member, which we've, uh, discussed a little bit mixed with Jeff's departure, but I figure we'll say, uh. Is there anything else on associate members?
I was just gonna extend my appreciation to Steve and Jeff Weston for their. Reading and edits of the town announce, both for associate member and CPC, which need, I don't think we've seen anything from anybody, but I wanted to thank them both for. Taking the time, it was helpful.
Right, well. Uh, same for CPC member?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, uh, New Year thoughts, you can. This, uh. This is fast.
My, my only thinking in, at least traditionally, you've started doing it in the fall, sort of, you know, and. Things are fresher, but, um. Maybe in September, if, I, I don't know if we're gonna, I guess we gotta meet in August, but if in September, just starting to build out. A potential list of amendments. I know. I'm remiss, we talked last. Um, meeting about tiny houses, and I said I'd do some research, but. Um, uncharacteristically, I did not get to it, but I will do it before. The August meeting. Um, and then the two things we've talked about. Um, maybe just maintain a list, which.
Yeah, so what were those two things? Again, we have the, uh, potential, uh.
The de minimis changes, yeah.
Slight changes, uh.
Wasn't there somebody who, um. Who, who had a, an email inquiry about tiny houses during this last month?
It was someone that had an inquiry as to accessory apartments.
Right.
I, I emailed her with tonight's, uh, agenda and. Emily Bayard.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
I feel like we're getting more questions. I don't know if we're doing anything differently, but more people are shooting us emails. It's sort of, sort of nice.
Yeah.
And Nathan, I don't remember the, the other one, we just talked about it.
Probably maybe it was, uh, I mean, there was, uh, figuring out the fees for.
Oh, yes, right. And I would say for that one, that's, that's just a regular business like we did. For, we redid the fee schedule, um.
I think it's very simple. You know, I was just looking at the language on the, on the fee thing, and it says it's seventy-five dollars, you know, for each new buildable lot. So the only thing we need to clarify is it's like, uh, you know, seventy-five dollars to start and for, you know, each additional. Uh, new building lot. It's an additional seventy-five dollars. So if you're just modifying existing lots, it's still seventy-five dollars. If it's one new building lot, it's seventy-five dollars. But if you create two new building lots that weren't there before, then it's hundred fifty dollars. So on and so forth. So we just need to clarify that, you know, because right now it looks like if you don't have any new building lots, that it's no fee.
So it's just a language change?
I think so. I mean, I, you know, we should, you know, probably discuss it more as an agenda item at some point, but I, I, I mean, I think it's just very simple to. Just kind of clarify seventy dollars, uh. Flat fee with an additional seventy-five dollars for, um. You know, each, uh. Additional, uh, new building lot.
So, so seventy-five, seventy-five for, for the second one and the third one, or seventy-five? Seventy, i- if they just come in for any rejiggering. And then if there are any new building lots, seventy-five for each new one. Is that what you're thinking?
So, yeah, but I, I mean, I wouldn't say if they, like, if, if it's just, if it just creates one new building lot, I wouldn't say that's a, uh. Like a one hundred fifty dollar fee. It's a little bit, the, the language could be a little tricky, so we can kind of think about that, but you know, it's like, you know, seventy-five dollar flat fee. And, uh. Or, or seventy-five dollars for each new building lot, whichever is, uh, greater.
So seventy-five. So, so Chuck would pay seventy-five. And he'd also pay seventy-five if there happened to be a new building lot in there.
If there happened to be a new building lot, I would say that would be seventy-five, because it's one new building lot.
Right.
So I would, I would say the language should be something like. You know, a, a, an A and R is a, a fee of, uh, no less than seventy-five dollars. Or seventy-five dollars for each new building lot.
So I would say we should put it on agenda for next time, but an observation, because it sounds like Jeff might do some writing. Um, Nathan, I liked your language at the beginning to differentiate new from modified. Cause you can have two existing, like what Chuck's doing, he has two existing lots and he's gonna combine, so that's a modification. And so new, you, you are in fact creating a new lot by combining two, but that's not really. New the way I think everyone's thinking about it, so maybe we just try to define with that. The rejiggering is like a modification.
Right, yeah. All right, I mean, does that, does that, I mean, I don't know, like, as far as, like, if you're, you know, modifying two different building lots, is that kind of like? Does seventy-five dollars represent that, or should it be one hundred fifty? I mean, you know, that's. If it should be, then that's fine. I don't know if it's, uh, more work at the registry of deeds or anything like, I think it's just, you just follow the plan, right? One way or the other. I don't know.
The registry doesn't care what we charge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured as much.
All right, good future topic.
Okay, yeah, well, well, yeah, we can, uh.
Can I throw one other thing out there?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's been a lot in the paper about the, uh, Chutesbury Solar Lawsuit. Um, most of it supportive. Except there was a shot over the bow from this Michael Thuer guy. I don't know if you, you've all have seen it, but it was, uh. Essentially attacking health, safety and welfare as. As abused justifications for the things we do in, in, in town. So I was wondering if there's any, uh, if there's gonna be any, um. Plan response to that, go out there or just let it go.
I'm always happy to, I do something with you, Jeff, but I, I think Donna would yell at us. Although I don't, I don't really see why, if we're, if we're defending the bylaw for public health, welfare, welfare and safety. Um. You know, so my take on this stuff, which. I'm a, this is my observation that. Governments tend to be unnecessarily quiet, like they don't defend themselves in the public square. And so everything that gets thrown out there doesn't get debunked. Um, you know, and. In fact, we're getting sued for a bylaw that the vast majority of town supported. And we recommend it, so it seems like there's nothing unreasonable. Uh, and is no dangerous waters of stating that. Uh, we're not getting into. The details of litigation, we're talking about the basis of rationale for a bylaw. I, I don't see how that could, that's like a first-person reporting, it's, it's no different than our rationale and explaining to the AG why we did it. Um. Donna would probably say better safer than sorry, but you know, that's what lawyers say.
Well, I wouldn't participate in any sort of, uh. Article about this particular lawsuit, but I would suggest that any action by the board publicly with respect to any portion of our town bylaw. Uh, could potentially be used in, uh, some sort of legal action against. A member of or the board as a whole. Or the town, uh, if, uh. If that. You know, article, um, was deemed to, uh. You know, kind of, uh, impair the, uh, ability of the individual or the board to act in a, a fair and judicious manner with respect to some matter that came before the board. Well, one thing that I, if I remember correctly, I think that editorial was in response to. Another, um, article in the week before by somebody named Jill Buchanan. Who was basically.
Yeah.
This is why. You know, it's defense defensible, this is why our bylaw. Is defensible in a small town like Chutesbury. And so. I think that this is in response to that, although it did get. It did come under the major editorial heading, whereas hers was like not the major editorial heading, if you guys follow me.
Yeah.
It was, it was kind of a side, not a sidebar, but it was on the same page, but. Didn't have that kind of weight to it. So I, I don't know what to do about that, really. It, it. I mean, there were some things that were inaccurate about it. And overstated, but I don't think we should get into it as a planning board.
Good with that.
Yeah. Maybe somebody out there, and there seems to be a lot of interested parties, maybe somebody will take it on. Wanted to make sure everyone was aware of it, because it was, it was a direct shot across our bow.
Yeah.
One last observation, it's coming from a realtor.
Yeah.
Who's that? Not a disinterested party. Who, who wrote the article?
Stewart, Michael Stewart. He's a realtor, kind of more in the Greenfield area, I think.
Stewart?
S- Stewart, Stewart, like Swords Folly.
A- S E W.
S E W A R D.
Okay.
And, and it was in the, the recent bulletin, and I think it was also in the, in the Gazette. Maybe in the recorder as well.
Yeah, you know, the other thing on that, on just this general topic for adjourn, um. Deacon had mentioned this when I saw him earlier, but, um. Not on behalf of the select board, but just sort of me as a resident, I went to the. Not, but I said that wrong, not a, not on behalf of the planning board, but I went to the select board. A few weeks ago and asked if they would consider a legal defense fund, um, for the town. And I guess it was two weeks ago. We discussed it at the select board. My sense is. What I, you know, I got, I talked to the town accountant, I talked to the treasurer, I talked to Becky, I talked to Rita, everyone was in support, so. Based on that, I went and asked the select board officially to create it, and basically you create a gift fund. So the town can accept gifts with a dedicated, um. Charge for what the money would be used for. So it, it got put off until I think tomorrow it's gonna be discussed, um, but. Given what we've heard, it seems like that might be a, a fiscally prudent approach, just to be able to catch. Um, funds from interested parties, you could just wanted to help the town. So no decisions be made, but we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I had a, I had a, uh, this may seem unrelated, but I had a colonoscopy today. And.
You're right, it does seem unrelated.
I, I'm gonna tie this together, you just be patient.
Please, please.
So I'm, I'm, I'm there waiting to get knocked unconscious. And, and, and the nurse, who's a, who's a, a fellow who lives in Chutesbury. Um, starts talking to me about all the solar stuff and wants to know how we can donate to the fund. So. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's people paying attention to this.
Yeah.
What, Jeff's colonoscopy?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not paying attention upright, yeah.
You know, it's, as far as a, like a fund like that, uh, I mean, it seems to me that may potentially be used for, uh, write a few, uh. Right of, uh, first refusal. Um, is that the right term, where it's like, like chapter sixty-one land and things like that?
No, you know, someone actually, the. It would have to, well, if the charge is for legal defense, then it could only be used for legal defense, or it paid Donna.
Right, well, so, but you said like a gift fund, and you can char- you know, say, you know, this gift is for legal defense, and you know, obviously there has to be some sort of accounting for that, but. Uh, you know, if it was, uh, set up to be, you know, for, uh, you know, more broadly, that could, that would be another potential use for something like that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Necessary or not, but.
Yeah, I think it'd be how this like word sets it up, but it does, it actually, someone at. Uh, environmental lawyer mentioned this to me, and I sort of did a little research, not fully, but. It's, what she said was that the town has right of first refusal. On the plots, even, you know, that I always assumed it was. If you're selling land at a chapter, you know, chapter, that you have to have. Right of first refusal, and what she was saying is a change of use. So, you know, if the town was interested in. You know, purchasing any of those lots, it could. I, I can't imagine we'd afford it, or would we do it, but it was, that was an interesting. Thing I hadn't, I wasn't aware of, or had.
I think I saw that in the master plan, there was something in there about, you know. Setting, uh, up a mechanism to, you know, be able to exercise right of first refusal and then. And you partner with Kestrel or, you know, someone like that to, uh. To swing things in. So that would be.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, uh, just seems related to me, just, but, uh, not. Not necessarily the first order of business, uh. Right now, with what's going on, so.
Well, before we adjourn, I wanna congratulate you, Nathan, on your first wonderfully facilitated meeting. Good job. Many more.
Many more, that's right, now I, I, I'm gonna. Get with, uh, Deacon and, uh, Carrie and kind of. Try and learn the ropes, see what's, uh, going on behind the scenes, I need to get up on. Uh, you know, maybe another thing as far as, uh, New Year thoughts would be, uh. I don't know, Deacon, if you want to remain the, uh, the signatory, uh, that's fine by me, but if you want to get it off your plate, then, uh, we'll have a vote on that next time.
We'll get, we'll go through that, that's fine. That's fine. Um, I wanted to say too, that one thing I've noticed over time is that the, um. The open space design. Plans. Have been hard to deal with, and I wonder if we want to think about if there are ways to make them easier, because. They've always been long and drawn out and. And difficult and.
Like what just happened tonight?
Pardon?
Like what's happening with the one tonight?
Well, there was a specific issue which we can probably deal with easily, but I was thinking more generally that. They've been very, they've been difficult and, and very time-consuming. And maybe that's just the nature of what we're doing, but. They have been difficult. Maybe there's something.
Two out of the three of them only involve one house in the end.
Yeah, exactly, and they were really, and they took a lot.
It took a lot of work for one house, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and maybe that's just the nature of the beast.
Well, and I think, you know, at least on this last one, the interesting observation we talked about was. It, uh, open space design should not be an end run when you can't do an A and R. You know, and if it comes down to doing one house, it's conceivable that that's what it's intended to be. Um, so it's something to think about.
Yeah. And part of the way we sold it. Back when we did. Was that the little projects for the, the, the small landowner would be easier. But the big subdivision, should they ever come, but you know, the large. But the big subdivision, should they ever come, but you know, the large housing project would um, would be under our thumb. And that's really the way we presented it, and it's the way it's been played out so far. In the three that we've done.
Yeah, so what are the three that we've done? Whitman?
Damari first, Chuck Damari, and that was by site plan review. Um, then we did um.
Oshewski.
Oshewski, right.
O, Oshewski on um Lockspahn Road, and I think that was still by site plan review. And then we switched it to special permit and we just did this one. Whitman. So Ari, Oshewski, Whitman.
So Oshewski, where, where is this on Lockspahn Road?
Yeah, it's about halfway from where I used to live to the lake, on the, on the west side. It's a, it's a driveway that snakes back, you can't even see the house site.
Oh, wow. Oh, so that was just one house?
One house. Yeah, he probably could have gotten more, but he elected just to do one.
And it took forever.
Well, he, he, he wasn't terribly easy to work with and he had difficulty finding a holder for his conservation.
Absolutely, but if there was some, and I'm not sure it's even possible, but if there's some way to make these go, go a little easier. It'd be good for the board. They've been difficult. All right, maybe there's nothing to be done.
Uh, could I ask a somewhat related question? I know that Mike and Jeff wanted me to um. Go to the zoning board last time to have a voting member for the Whitman case. I'd be happy to again on the thirteenth. If you feel like um that would be beneficial, but um I suppose I just want to hear from how the two of you feel.
I, I think that'd be fine.
Okay, I, I'll be there on the thirteenth then.
Thank you, Jeff.
Most in, my experience across Massachusetts is most planning boards, zoning boards. They don't even know who's on the other board and have no idea what they're doing.
Okay.
What they do or what they're supposed to do or what they have done or. Olivia, so. This actually works out well, not just because it's me that's the liaison, it's just a good idea.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. That was uh interesting for me to go. So I'll be there on the thirteenth at five. Thanks.
And, and I would suggest in the future, if you could possibly find another planning board member who, who would. Be a dual member, it, it would be a good idea.
Okay, great.
Like you.
Yeah, I don't know if uh. Uh, you know, if I can't make a uh five o'clock meeting, I might uh try and take a look at some of the recordings. Everything's on YouTube now. Put it, put it on uh two X. Get through it a little bit quicker. Hey, it's eight thirty-five. Uh, anyone have anything uh unanticipated business uh?
I was just wondering if Deacon had any final words of advice as he passed the torch to you, Nathan. Do you have any words of wisdom for? For Nathan Deacon?
No. I mean, it's just uh. It's, it's a real responsibility and you wind up thinking about it a lot and. It um takes time.
So. Um, just uh, Nathan, you and I touched on this in emails between us. But you've determined from your employer that you are able to chair meetings. And continue to chair the meeting while. Solar, amp, coals, subjects are discussed.
Yeah.
And so I, I thought that was a good thing, that you didn't have to step down. But, but you're not going to vote on him in the end. You'll, you'll run the meeting. Um, run the hearings. But you're not going to vote on those particular permits. Is that, is that correct?
That, that's correct, right? So, so, you know, what we're looking at is uh. It would probably, probably be a special permit, right? Any sort of special permit that would involve uh. Anything with utilities, whether it's, you know, transmission or uh. Some sort of uh generation facility, solar or battery, you know, energy storage, what have you, any sort of resource. Uh, I would just not participate in the uh debate. And I would abstain uh when voting comes around. Uh, then that would also include any sort of uh bylaws or regulations, which I mean, it's by law stuff, really. Um, you know, I wouldn't, same thing, just won't, won't participate in that uh debate and uh will uh. Record an extension when voting comes around. Um.
Your role would be administrative and that's.
That's right, that's right. And uh, and then they're fine with that, you know, uh, I've basically um. Because I've asked so many detailed questions of them, they, they feel pretty comfortable that I'm, you know, really thinking a lot about it. Um, so that's, yeah, you know, it's. And that made me feel comfortable that I'm not kind of operating in the dark here, that uh. You know, they're, they're comfortable with what I'm doing and not, not too worried about it.
Um, okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm trying to think if there's anything else worth saying about this topic, but.
I, I have a, a question slash suggestion, and I think, I also think it's great news, that's terrific to hear. At some point, when you get a chance, maybe talking to Donna in advance of anything coming down the pike. It'd be interesting if there's a way of you serving as chair. But not counting towards. The full contingent of people who could participate in a special permit. So for example, there's seven of us, right? And if you were able to run the meeting in administrative, administrative mode. But sort of to the side, that would, you know, rather than having us be six. Planning board members hearing a special permit if we recruit a associate member for the seven, because that would give us more flexibility personnel wise. And I don't know if that's possible, but it's something to think about.
I mean, I don't see how that would conflict with anything if I were to. Run a meeting and, and appoint an associate member to uh sit on the special permit and vote.
Well, no, here's what Michael's asking, because when you're, when you're running your hearings. For a seven-member board, you have to have five, five consistent members there. Um, attending the hearing. And then in order to approve it, those five have to vote favorably.
Right.
So you, you, you wouldn't count towards those five because you can't ultimately vote.
Abstain, right, yeah.
But you have to have five eligible ones other than yourself.
Right, so, but if we had an associate member that was designated uh. To, to, to sit on the special permit hearing, they would. Uh, sit there. I don't think that would preclude me from just, you know, running the discussion, the meeting.
That's the question, because if there is, if you pulled, if we pulled an associate member. It could be seen as having a planning board of eight people. But, you know, it could be that there's a planning board of seven that includes you. And then for the purpose of the special permit hearing, it sort of shifts to another seven and you're just running the meeting, so.
I, it's, it's worth making sure it's legal, I agree. Yeah, all right, so I'll, you know, I'm gonna probably have to get Donna's number from somebody. Yeah, that on the air, right?
Yeah, she'll kill you if you do it on the recording, Jeff.
Oh, well, she has an office number, you know. I, 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 I've got all kinds of numbers for her, if I can give you her office one. It's uh.
You can, why email it to me?
Yeah, email it just to be on the safe side.
And uh, yeah, I mean, I'll uh, I'm, I'm gonna get all her numbers. I'm, I'm gonna need to, you know, be in touch if I need to, so.
Beginning of a relationship. So you want me to move to adjourn?
But can I ask a question? What, if you can't vote, can you be counted as a member of the quorum? I don't know how that works.
So I can be counted as a member of a quorum for purposes of uh holding a meeting, right? So we, and, and save for today's meeting, right? If we only had four people. And then uh, we'd be able to do anything except the items that I can't touch, right? Because then there would only be three voting members on those, I'm abstaining, right? So you only have three votes and it's not uh.
Okay.
It's not the majority of that seven-member board.
Okay, thank you.
I, Nathan, I don't even know if that's true, because if you have a quorum for a meeting. Then the whole board can do business, or even if you abstain from business you're not involved in. It's not that the meeting is unable to proceed, it's just that for that particular topic, you know, short of a. A public, uh, public hearings are different, but if you had, if you had to vote on something that, you know, was. Yeah, um, is what, you're abstaining, the, the rest of the, the rest of the members can do it, it's just a shit, straight majority. Um, or two-thirds, whatever.
Right, but if there's only, if there, if there was only four members of the board at that meeting. Right, then you're not going to be able to vote on anything or pass anything, because you're only going to have three yes votes.
No, that's what I'm saying. You can, so if there was, if, if there was four of us, right? That were meeting and even, and three people had to abstain. One person can vote in the affirmative, it still passes. Abstaining doesn't mean that you can't do business. It's sort of, you have to start the meeting with a quorum, and then for each issue. Normally people abstain because they're feeling conflicted, you know, like Deacon didn't have to abstain about the. The Mary Lou thing, but he decided that was appropriate too. It's not a legal thing, so. It's, all it is, is in order to do business, to open up the meeting and to conduct business, but. The business is considering a vote, how the votes play out. It, it's legitimate to have a vote where some people are for, against and abstain, because that's still business.
I think for the vote to pass, you have to have a majority, and it's a seven-member board, so you have, even if, you know, if four people. Convene a meeting of the planning of a seven-member board, you need all four votes to pass anything that has any motion.
I, I, I believe you're correct.
But I, I tend to believe that that, I mean, that makes.
No, you're right, you're right. You said it, the way you said it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so that, yeah, so that's the, the crux of it, right? So, yeah, if uh, you know, we're having a meeting and the only agenda item is uh. The solar bylaw or something like that, you know, you can discuss until you're blue in the face. And then, you know, you could vote next time when, when you get the uh someone else up to speed on it and they feel good, you know. Then you vote, right? But if it's just four of us and I can't vote, then, you know, you're stuck on something. So that's the way that would work.
Was this discussion after a motion to adjourn?
I didn't move it yet.
I'm waiting, yeah, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to hear that from somebody.
I would like to make the motion, but I would like to, on the way out, express great thanks to Deacon. I move to adjourn.
I will second that. Both things.
Both.
Discussion, would, would anyone else like to uh? Add anything?
Just that I'm glad Deacon's staying on the board.
Same, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank both uh Deacon and uh Jeff for uh your many years of uh service. And uh, you know, the, I, I'm, I'm grateful, just as a new resident of the town. And uh, I look forward to um, you know, the, the mentorship I can grab uh. Probably not as long from Jeff, you're gonna be away in Conway before too long, but Deacon will be around. And I'm gonna take advantage of uh both of you, both of you, as long as you're on the, on the board and uh within my grasp.
Okay, good luck, Nathan. I have confidence you're gonna do a good job.
Thank you. Call the roll, Nathan. Bressler.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Weston.
Hi.
Lacy.
Hi.
Take care of.
Hi.
Bonner.
Hi.
And I'm an I. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night all, good night.
Yeah.